Water still flowing. So they get it clamped enough to stop it.
He would be the one who can speak.
The earlier today, there was like some water bubbling and I was like, oh.
That's.
Heather was having a day and Jake's been having a week.
That is.
Well, first, they were. Fine. First, they opened it up because there's a speed. Other than space. And then they determined like, well, we should put an insert valve so we don't have to shut water off downtown. Why we have it all open.
Well, and it gives it better.
Yeah, Monday night, on Tuesday, Scotty started digging. And he, it was.
That's what I will suggest.
Lead pipes and or lead. Connected parts that had been attached and attached it with it.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Like. Was getting into it. And then we had a bigger mess.
Yep.
We can get into it when we get into it. Or just if you knew like.
It's gonna vary.
Wish I did.
Upside to the big. Eye if possible. Even just to get the equipment in.
Yeah, so. But they got the valve in today, so few insert valves.
I wonder how wide that.
Collating over there. It was like bubbling a lot when I first.
And trinsing all the way down as.
There was like water running down this.
I took a picture of it.
Jake's having a really bad week.
Yeah, he just rolled.
Upper like striped triangle. Has to be striped.
He's having a really.
But it has to be striped. That makes sense to me. That landscaping. It's the only one I'm concerned about, really. Right next to the um. Shed would also.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge.
The United States of America. To the public for which it stands. For the hearing justice.
Vogel?
Vogel? Hi ladies.
President.
McLeod.
Here.
Uh, Montgomery.
Here.
Rudick.
Here.
Sam is um sick. He emailed me.
We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Did anyone have a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
I've reviewed the minutes and all approved them.
Is there anyone here for public comment unrelated to items on the agenda? Moving on to the public hearing of three two three South State Street, a site plan review uh to expand an existing parking lot. Would you like staff to start?
Please. The applicant at St. Andrews Church is applying for a site plan review for an expansion of the parking lot at three twenty-three South State Street. Uh, the property is currently zoned RR restricted residential. Uh, it's located at the northeast corner of State Locust and State Street. And uh, you can see the attachments of the map and images of the property. It can be accessed off of State Street and the alley current um currently houses the church and manna pantry, which is a local food pantry. The proposed expansion of the parking lot will include six new spots and a route for a box truck to use to mainly for delivery for the food pantries to make it easier for them to um access the property. Um, but the expansion will serve, the parking will serve both the church and the pa- pantry. They are currently trying to prepare for a continued increase in use for their services and the church will also benefit with more parking. The plan shows that four existing parking spaces will be altered in order to meet the current zoning ordinance requirements. Um, attached in documents, you have pictures of the site. You also have a aerial of the site showing the zoning and then the application as well as the site plan provided by the applicant. Because it is under eight parking spaces, we don't require in our zoning ordinance an engineered plan for review. So we just require some sort of plan and the applicant has provided that, I think, to a pretty decent ability without having an engineer come on site and do it, um, which is quite costly. There is in the staff report talk about landscaping, so our ordinance and our landscaping of parking lots talks about if you're increasing parking in the ordinance or in your site to a pre-existing site, that you don't have to bring the site into full compliance to meet the landscaping ordinance, which is pretty intense for parking lots. Um, especially if you're an existing parking lot because there used to not be any kind of requirements for landscaping in parking lots. So to go from no landscaping requirements to meet our entire ordinance of landscaping would be extreme. So our ordinance offers a very convoluted calculation of how you have to figure out how much parking or how much landscaping they need to provide. I explained it in the staff report to the, how I thought it was the easiest way to calculate it. And it came up to approximately around three hundred square feet of landscaping um to be provided. The staff report doesn't indicate um where they should provide it. I've had discussions with the applicant. We've discussed um a couple different spots. They could landscape all of the striped orange areas and that would get them pretty close to three hundred square feet. There was some concern from them about that not possibly working for the truck delivery to make the turns if they curb it and landscape all that. Um, we went and so then I suggested some other options that might be available. Again, I'm not there when the truck's delivering, so I don't know what works, you know, logistically for them. So then we also, I also recommended maybe if the orange striped areas of the site plan don't work, that they could do. I don't, I know I stand right in the way for you guys seeing the projector, but they could do some of the red areas. Um, I didn't calculate that out, but it appears to be approximately the similar size of what the orange areas would be. With existing sites, sometimes you just have to do the best that you can do to try to get as close to the ordinance as you can. Um, especially with things like landscaping where you can't always move it in. I would recommend that the board also look at maybe counting some existing landscaping that they already have in, which they're gonna talk to you about. Um, to see, because it's near the parking area, um, to see if that could count for some so that they can try to to conform to the ordinance as much as they can, but still be able to expand the parking for a need in our community. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Are there three red?
There, there are three. There's one. Here, here, and here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a representative? Please give us uh your name and address to make good the.
Um, Reverend Rada Michelle Tropica. Um, I am the rector at St. Andrews Episcopal Church, um, which means I have uh authority over our building and building use. Um, the address is three two three South State Street, Big Rapids. Um, so thank you for um helping us to look at this and considering uh the expansion of our parking lot, um, pri- which primarily, uh, as Michelle said, is to help meet the increased needs of the manna pantry, um, and make it um more efficient and safer for food deliveries um to be received by the pantry. Um, and uh, the manna pantry has um also continues to experience a lot of guests who use um bus, our bus system to come to the pantry. Um, and so this expansion would also make our parking lot uh more easily, easily and safely navigable for our buses. Um, so for the, the three red areas that are marked on here, um, the two smaller rectangles are already existing landscaping that the plan that we presented had no uh, no plans to pave over. Um, so this one, um, that one right up there off of the porch, um, is a, um, I do have a photo of it. I'm not sure how to show it to you, but I um, I do have a photo if you want to see it um on my phone. Um, that is an existing like raised bed, uh, concrete raised bed that is off of that side of the porch. Um, that is staying put. Um, and so that, that whole red space is already existing landscaping. Um, it's got some stairs built into the raised bed that goes up to the porch. Um, but the plan is for that to stay and clean up the raised bed part of it and make it look prettier. Um, the other rectangle, this one down here, um, is, it's, it's hard to see kind of on the uh top-down plan, um, but that is kind of all part of that covered porch area. Um, and so that part is already currently green space that butts up against the um emergency exit stairwell for the downstairs of the building. Um, and the plan is for the um uh, the paving, paving to come up to that straight line there again, sorry, against the building, um, which would not pave over that red rectangular space. So we already had the plan to um retain that as landscaping. Um, it is not on this chart because the um, it's not the part of the parking lot affected by this proposal. Um, our parking lot does extend a little bit further down this way. You can kind of see it up there in the corner where that light post is. Um, but that, there is a whole strip of green landscaping, um, that is already against that row of um uh, of parking spots. Um, the, our director of the manna pantry is also here. Um, I should note, the manna pantry, though originally founded by St. Andrews, is now a five oh one C three separate organization um, that rents space from St. Andrews. So we serve as their landlord and in cooperation with them. So um, their director is also here and can help answer questions more specific to the the truck and needs of the truck and that piece of it, if you have questions about that. Um, but one thing she and I talked about is this, the red uh triangular space here. Um, to curb and landscape that in, um, would kind of defeat the purpose of making the truck able to deliver to that back porch door of the uh rectory, um, of the part of the building the pantry is in. Um, but this striped space, uh, which abuts the existing green space that is staying, um, that would be very easy to retain, uh, to keep landscaped. There's already actually like a small shrub, um, bush there. Do you want me to close that? That's okay. Um, it, it would be easy to retain that as landscaping, which um is, looks like it is a slightly smaller uh, triangle than the red one, um, but would not be in the way of the truck. Um, there is also a very small, which is why it's not even indicated on here at all, um, spot of green space that is curbed that is right along this wall of the building. Um, and it would be, it would be very easy to keep that little strip also intact. Do you have any questions for me?
I see your new uh refrigerated storage unit going in there.
Yes.
How is that going to be configured? I'm assuming that it's just going to turn and the door will face out, or is the door facing into the building?
Our manna pantry director can answer that question better than I can. Um, the installation of the shed and uh the um refrigerated unit right behind it, um, has already been approved. Like, we have that permit in place. We just can't. Doesn't make sense to install them until asphalt's laid under them. Um, that we, those were applied for under separate uh applications.
I wasn't questioning whether it could go in. I just see how it's sitting on.
I'm just providing, I'm just providing additional information. Um, yeah, whenever you want Juliette to come up here, she can uh answer that better than I can. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to give public comment in favor? Of the proposal? Please give us your name and address at the podium.
My name is Jodi Gaber, J O D I, G A B E R T. I'm the senior warden of St. Andrews Episcopal and a former manna pantry employee. Well, volunteer. Um, I have been a part of manna pantry until the COVID years. We started out in approximately a twelve by six closet. And we had two days a week that we could feed the hungry. Obviously, demand has um, taken over. And uh several years ago, a previous rector and her spouse graciously donated the two-car garage that is now the basic storage site for manna pantry. Um, in my capacity as senior warden, I saw that we had proper, um, now I'm losing my words tonight. I'm sorry. Uh, we made sure that the vestry was one hundred percent behind this project. And then we had an opportunity to talk to the congregation. And yes, we're giving up a tree that we all adore. We love this tree. It's a beautiful red in the fall. It's very shading in the summer, but it has to go so we can have sufficient parking spaces and space to get a box truck in. Um, I've assisted in previous uh box truck adventures when we have taken a convoy of trucks and cars to United Church where the Feeding America truck was. And uh we'd caravan back. This is going to help take care of this problem significantly. And with the demand that manna pantry has increasingly had since two thousand one, um, we were glad that the congregation was as supportive as the vestry was in making our part of the, the arrangement possible. And so, um, St. Andrews Episcopal is very much supportive of this project. Uh, it's a way to continue our legacy ministry with manna pantry and a way to make sure that maybe we can lower that one in eight hunger rate in Acosta County. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any written materials or phone calls to the city?
I did not receive any communication.
You have a chance to rebuttal right now? You don't have to.
I, do you want the?
Want me to speak or answer any questions?
Mr. Ruddick's question?
I was only wondering how that box was actually, what configuration that was going to sit in. Is it going to basically spin back with the door away from the building and butt back up into there against it? Or, or does that door actually go inside the building?
It actually has two, so it has the opportunity to uh go into the side door of the manna pantry as well as the front door. But we will be putting the shed, which will be a distribution shed, so we continue our fresh food Fridays, which are extremely popular. And as I can attest to, sometimes the traffic parking at noon to one o'clock goes around the corner. So there is a traffic backup that goes into the alleyway. But the distribution shed allows us, along with cold storage, is to bring in and store longer fresh foods from generous local grocers. We are getting eight to twelve hundred pounds of food on a Friday from Walmart, Meyer, Aldi, Panera. And we have to distribute that food to those that need it in a timely fashion so that it does not go to waste and we have to have proper storage. And that is one reason that Fridays are popular and there is such a line uh around the uh I uh alleyway is because they're all trying to get the fresh food. We're seeing about eighteen hundred visits per month. And yes, the distribution shed and, I'm sorry to answer your question more specifically, is the cold storage unit is on order and uh we are just waiting for approval of the parking lot for the foundation and the shed and um, cold storage, which can be refrigerated or freezer, um, will be able to be accessed by two different doors into the internal pantry. Anything else?
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing and the commissioners will uh go into fact finding.
I don't think we have any.
Don't forget to use your microphones.
Because of the amount of space. Is that down closer or is that?
This is really hard to do minutes when you don't talk in.
Sorry, now I have a senior moment.
Sorry, Roy. Not particularly a zoning issue.
No.
I have one question for the applicant. Have you talked with the folks that have the trucks and buses that are going to use this this entrance, this twelve-foot entrance, delivery truck? Have, have they looked at this and said?
No problem.
I, I didn't quite hear your first comment. The question is that have we had who look at it?
The, the, the folks that come to your establishment with the box truck, that, that's what that drive is for. And, and the it's twelve foot wide. Will those trucks fit in there? Have, have you talked to them and said? So they've had a chance to look at it for you and give you.
It should accommodate a sixteen to eighteen foot box truck. Our deliveries are daily, but right now we're doing them by multiple pickup trucks. So our plan in the future is to hopefully have a donated box truck, which we're not exactly sure what the size of that will be. But it's not going to be more than sixteen to eighteen feet because we can't operate it.
If, if it's twelve foot wide there, it would be pretty difficult to get the truck wider than twelve foot.
Sixteen, eighteen long. It refers to length of a truck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Are, are the, are the red, uh, the first proposed, the orange, uh, striking here? Did you say that, that you, we are, you're not gonna use those as landscaping?
So what I, um, what I would request, uh, based upon my conversations with Michelle, are that the the two upper, um, next to spot one and next to spot four striped will be painted stripes, um, to delineate the, that's why they're striped in the image. Um, to help delineate the uh parking spaces appropriately as per the city ordinance. Um, and then the two red rectangular spaces and the bottom orange stripe next to spot six would be um curbed landscaping.
And what about the uh, the s- the spot next to parking space D?
Oh, yeah, up there.
What is that space for?
That is, um, so our parking lot extends, like, there's an our parking lot goes further up beyond this slightly. Um, there are, there is the ample existing drive, that's the existing parking lot that's in the photos. Um.
That's, that's hard surface right now.
Yeah, that's hard surface right now. Um, and so that just wouldn't be marked. That just is then part of the turn radius of um the existing drive of the parking lot. Um, then the others, on the other side of that initial drive in the parking lot are a row of parallel spots which are along, um, another set of um green space that is shared uh between our, that splits our parking lot from the neighboring bank's parking lot.
Can you clarify for me? You talked about a area where there's a shrub coming up by the um by the, I think you called it the emergency exit for the lower level, and I believe that's what's in my picture, but can you verify that that's? Could you tell that that's what I'm looking at? Yeah. I think you're talking about this area. It would be a small wedge.
And so this is closer.
Oh, that's much better.
Yeah, so this is what already exists and there's no plan. So yeah, right where you're pointing. But then where this shrub is, is where the lower, um, um, that lower striped area is right where that shrub is.
Okay.
And so then if that, if that is what is then marked for landscaping, that shrub would remain and this would be.
It would be something like that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then that's the, the same, uh, with the other red sp- uh, square right by the porch. That is what that is. It's just, it's messy right now, but.
No, just.
We would make it prettier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any problems with that at all.
I'm with all of it.
Yep.
Would anybody like to make a move?
I can try it. So I moved at the site plan review application for both phases of three twenty-three South State Street. Do I need to list that PIN number? Thank you. For an agricultural education center. No?
I didn't change that for site plan review for parking.
Yes, I wondered. Sorry, I can change it. Um, so for approve parking, the manna pantry be approved because it meets all the criteria for review set in section nine point six of the zoning ordinance.
Um, would you like to include the areas of landscaping we discussed?
So you want to add conditions? Are we adding conditions?
I'm not sure which areas we're talking about. I, I, you have three in the red and, and I thought that the big triangle was not.
This is, this one they said won't work. So you have this area that's already existing. This area and then this area, I think, is what would work best for them.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems reasonable to me, too.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
So I need you with conditions, yes?
With, yeah, with the condition is.
Okay, so we're gonna approve this with the condition that we're going to go ahead and add landscaping into the what side is that?
You can just say the three areas.
Okay, the three areas designated on the graph?
Yep.
That, uh, we'd like those to be fully landscaped.
Second.
Yep.
Vogel?
Yes.
Uh, Kalladus?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Reddick?
Yep.
Hope it works out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Be nice to be able to drive through there safely.
Yes, it will.
Am I reading this correctly that we now need to submit or revise dated site plan and documents addressing, um within sixty days?
Yeah, we can just mark up these and they just need to come to me.
Okay.
So if you wanna come in sometime this week, I'll be around.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's it for public hearings. We'll move on to general business.
So I know that I didn't list any, but then today I remembered that we do have some stuff to talk about. Um, we had our first two meetings actually with Williams and Works about the um rewriting of the zoning ordinance. And the first meeting is what I'm gonna go over today because we haven't gotten all of the information from the second revised information from the second me- second meeting. But basically what we started with in our first meeting was how to structurally um, s- set the ordinance so that as we move through doing the ordinance, all of the sections that are being revised follow the same protocol. Um, and we don't have to go back through and it's just easier to do it at the beginning if you've ever done a three hundred-page document. So we did change, or the, the, obviously none of this has been adopted, so the the committee did talk about making some changes and so this annotated s- section kind of talks about some of the existing, what existing section is and then what we're proposing as a new section. So one of the big issues that I struggle with when I'm using the ordinance is that each definition has its own number. And so if I want to keep the definitions alphabetic, alphabetical, so that you can find them, you have to change all of the numbers beyond it, which does not work well. Um, so we're recommending to like have each section be a letter so that, that way, we can just dump it into the correct letter and we don't have to redo all the numbering for all the definitions. Cause right now they're not in, they're in alphabetical order except for the ones that they've added. So you have to do the alphabet and then you have to go to the end of the definitions to see if they've added the definition you're looking for. Um, so it just doesn't work well. We also talked about separating out, um, the zoning districts and the zoning regulations. So we'll have a article that talks about what the zoning districts are and explains how our map is used and how um, you interpret the map. And then we will have a new article for, or rename article for, to talk about just the district regulations. And so everything will kind of shift to be and a lot of what is in section three will now move to article four and have different section numbers for different zoning districts similar to what we do now. Um, so that's what all of those pages are.
Really no change in content, only organization of the document.
Yeah, so far we haven't done a ton of change in content, just organization to make it more user-friendly and the goal at that end, so if you get on Munich Code for the city, if you go to the city and look like the city ordinances that are not the zoning ordinance, those are all s- held online at Munich Code. Our intentions is to also include the zoning code in that, so we need to format it in a way that is also acceptable to them because they will take that format or take our zoning ordinance and put it in their format. So it's best to have them try to match as best as we can. Um, so then general provisions is now four, it's gonna become five. So on and so forth. Parking is five, it's gonna become six, signs is six, it's gonna become seven. Um, adding non-conforming lots into our non-conforming section because it kind of talks about non-conforming lots, but there's not a lot, so that's gonna be added. And then the rest are just moving them to the next the next process, or the next article, since we added article four as a zoning district regulations. Um, that's basically what they have talked about and confirmed on what they want to do. We did have another meeting on Monday and we got into the zoning districts and um, how we wanted the language about how to interpret the zoning map and what needs to be said. And that and the board record, or the committee recommended some rec- some revisions to what was presented, so we'll go over those probably at the next meeting. Um, we did not get into, I'm suspecting that the next time we meet with them we'll start getting into district regulations, district setbacks, district land uses, things of that nature. So, you know, some more of the meat of the ordinance than kind of the legalese type discussion that we've been having so far. So I just had an update for you on that.
Did I forget anything, Tim? Nope.
So you're really not changing ordinances or rewriting the ordinances, you're just
We will be.
Organizing.
We, I mean, there will be some changes to the ordinance. The board, or the committee just hasn't gotten to that part yet. We're still getting into the organization and um, like, one of the things they talked about is we have a preamble in our ordinance that kind of describes what the ordinance is for. And so instead of doing it as a preamble, they recommended we break it up and have like bullet points of why we do zoning and the importance of it for our community. And so we discussed what those points should be. Lots of them were taken from the preamble that's already existing. The board or the committee made comments to, you know, which ones they wanted to add or how they wanted them readjusted. But for the most part, there hasn't been significant changes talked about, but we haven't really gotten into it yet.
Great update, Michelle.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Any unscheduled business? With that, I will adjourn the meeting.
You know, maybe next time we'll do the thing with uh City Hall or City Nation, but I have